Alright, good evening. It's 6:30 on June 18th and I am opening the Select Board meeting. We have four members in attendance, one not participating. And can you join me for, oh, and this meeting is being recorded and can you join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Alrighty, so. And number two, citizen statements and petitions, asking if there's anybody online or the audience that would like to say anything to the Select. And seeing none, we're gonna move on to the funner part of the night, correspondence. So last meeting, we had talked about our veterans agent retiring and coming in with a new agent who we will appoint later tonight. And we just wanna present, Robin, if you could come up to the table here, you don't have to say anything. But we just wanna recognize you on behalf of the Select Board for all of your service and we wanted to make sure we did that here in writing. So, thank you very much. This is for your years of service as a veterans agent. So we really appreciate all that time. That's, that's decade plus of time for us. So.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, so while I'm standing to the members of the board, does anybody wanna say anything before we let Robin go?
I've heard nothing but wonderful things about you over the years. So like, I've heard it from many directions. So thank you for, for your attention and your, your care in this work.
Appreciate it. I, I thank the board for the support that I've had over the years and it's always been good from the beginning. And I've, I've really enjoyed what I've been doing, but you know, it's time to move on, so.
That's alright. We thank you so much and if we do anything, we'll reach out. Oh yeah, let's do a photo. Katie?
You know, Robin, you're really, you're a good friend. You've been a model citizen. I don't wish you would die, what you've done for us will always.
Myself. Let's get the table. It's up to you guys.
Working on that.
Yes.
Coming soon. Thank you so much. Yes.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so we're gonna jump real quick to number six and talk about community events. Um, and the first community event is the Horables Parade, which is happening July 3rd at 6:30 PM. Do you wanna come up and chat as a representative of the Horables Parade for the Mendon Fire Department?
So we hold the parade July 3rd, I believe it's 6, 6 or 6:30, I believe. It's gonna be in the same group. I know the past couple of years it's been different. Last year it was from Emerson. Staged up at Emerson at the old airport there and then came down Maple Street. Lieutenant Nud and then ended in the parking lot here at Town Hall and Police Station. Lieutenant Nud has already reached out to the police chief. Has everything squared away with the police department to shut the road down, things like that. Like last year, Brother's Garage donating the ice cream chocolate there. The, the Mendon Fire Federation Union is purchasing, I believe, hot dogs, chips, drinks. The brothers volunteered their time to cook it.
Great. Yeah, so I have here, yeah, July 3rd lineup is at 6:00 PM in the parking lot at Emerson and Hastings. And the kickoff is at 6:30 and then Maple Street will be blocked off for the parade for them to walk down and then they'll end up here at the Town Hall for some food and prizes and judging of the costumes.
Yes, we have wrap tickets. We got, we got a bunch of stuff.
Excellent. So, yeah, we hope to see all of you out there tonight. We'll have this on the Town website and we'll put it up on Facebook and all that good stuff. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time tonight.
Do you need us to judge or anything? Do you already have that squared away?
I believe Lieutenant Nud is gonna be reaching out to, for judges, believe the Select Board and I think some other members as well, so. Yeah, I think he's gonna be reaching out, saying, hey, can I ask for that? So we'll look forward to that. Thank you.
So much. Alright, and um, the next summary event would be the 25th Taft Public Library Cardboard Boat Race. Which is Wednesday, I believe, the 23rd of July down at the town beach. And you can submit your request to participate on the library website, I believe. Yeah, and that's another one that's very. Okay, and where can they down, download that?
Uh, I mean, I think they have them at the library, but I think.
All printed out?
I think there are paper copies.
Okay, so if you need, if you don't wanna, if you wanna skip the internet and you want to go get a piece of real paper, you can do that at the library and let them know your excitement to participate. That's a quarter century tradition here in Mendon. So.
They have a workshop too about how, how to build a boat.
Do they really?
Yes, they have, one of the library trustees and the son of another trustee with, so the, right, a former Coast Guard and also a, I guess, previous participant in the cardboard boat race. They're doing a workshop. How to build a boat.
I think I know who that resident is. Um, awesome. That's great news. That's because, how do you build a piece of paper that floats in the water? Ricky?
No, there was one year that we participated. We think we could nominate Brendan to vote.
Resident engineer slash captain is not here. Yeah, I don't wanna throw the captain under the bus. But it's a Wednesday in the middle of the week and about one month from now. So this is something the Select Board will consider.
Yeah.
Um, maybe we can put it on the agenda for next time to chat about.
Pretty amazing boat that we built.
Alright, so let's jump back up to number four, which would be meeting minutes. And um, that was for May 21st, so be looking for a motion on that.
I did submit a minor amendment, which is I prefer to go by Ms. versus Mrs.
Okay.
Or doctor, but you know.
Yes.
For this purpose, Ms. is fine. So I sent that to Katie. So that was my.
I made the changes.
Is that something we need to adjust going back?
It was new, I think.
Cause I was putting Elena and Jeremy said it sounded better.
The titles, you know. So now everybody's like, you know, the rest of you are Mr. So I'm.
Ah, okay.
But so like, I guess I would move to approve the meeting minutes for May 21st with the amendment mentioned.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? If that passes. Um, alright, so and then distributed for next time were the meeting minutes for March 18th, 2025 and for June 4th, 2025. Alright, so number seven, appointments. We have one appointment for the General Bylaw Review Committee of Karen Mead. And I believe that the Chair of the Bylaw Review Committee, Mr. Tom Rowley, has given full approval of this, of this individual. They voted unanimously to invite her onto the committee. So I'd be looking to have a motion to appoint Karen Mead.
I move to appoint Karen Mead to the General Bylaw Review Committee for a three-year term to expire on June 30th, 2027, pending successful ethics training.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Motion passes. Uh, so letter B, Parks Commissioner, joint appointment with the Parks Commission. So because of the resigning of a member of the Parks Commission, we're now left with two members on the board. And we need to post a vacancy for this position so that then we can have a joint meeting. So a 45-day vacancy needs to be posted. And then after that time, presuming we, we get submissions for the appointment, we would need to have a joint meeting with the Parks Commission in order to appoint said individual. So this section here is just looking for a motion to move to post the vacancy for Parks Commissioner. And I'd be looking for that.
I move to postpone it to Parks Commissioner.
Second. Discussion? Then we talked about this ad nauseam last time. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then all those against? And that motion passes. Thank you. And then, uh, the third, which was the CMRPC alternate delegate. And so I believe Select Board Member Rowley had volunteered for this position last time. I'm asking again, are you willing to participate again? So I'd be looking for a motion to appoint Select Board Member Rowley.
Move to appoint Mike Rowley as the alternate delegate to CMRPC.
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you for doing this again.
Um.
Yes. Not just in general, points in general coverage for the Select Board. Just want people to rethink, you know, where to line to. Cause I'd like to step back from a couple of things.
Would we do that, that we use on?
Yeah, yeah. So I kinda think this is sort of in that vein.
Yeah, and where I think we did, we've done that the last couple of years, right, in July, right? So I should get that. Yeah. Right. Do you wanna do that after we do goal setting or before? Do you want to make?
I think it's more administrative.
Alright, so we'll put that down. Let's talk about.
It would be great to, just to send us all an email of what the coming ones are.
Yeah.
And then we can all email who, who wants what and doesn't want what.
Right.
Yeah, so you have a spreadsheet lingering around.
As part of revitalization discussion.
Yeah, and I think it, it's useful for us to know when and how often these boards meet, which is then before we commit to things.
Grand old schedule was something that we were sort of talking about with the website. And I, and I wonder if that's something we could button down a little bit better. Cause right now, the calendar on the website has like, the Select Board has like four entries in the digital calendar. Like, it's very hard to sync it. Yeah, and knowing when the committees meet.
Yes. Yeah, that's a good point.
And I apologize. Since I sit here, it's really shaping the last, you know, future agenda.
Alright, well then I'll put, we'll put it on pause. Cause you might have forgotten by then.
That's true.
So anyway, there is still a motion hanging out there. And so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and all those against? Alright, so welcome to another year of CMRPC, Mr. Rowley.
I think I just missed the, either it's coming up, was that, don't cross in.
Oh, that, the award ceremony? Right. Yeah, I saw, I saw an email about that.
I don't know if it's, it's next week or it was last week.
Right. Yeah, I don't remember. Did not put it on my calendar.
Um, okay, so the next one, this list is posted on the website, but I had also emailed it earlier. There is a list of appointments and then you'll see highlighting in there. And, and that demarks that the member, according to the town clerk, has not been updated on their ethics training. And so if that's the case, we have two choices. You can pass over those people until they get ethics training. Or you can choose to, you know, amend the motion to say that they won't be appointed officially until they complete the ethics training. So those are sort of the two different places we can go on this. We need to read out all of the members as a whole that are on this list. And then we can either decide to, you can either decide to, as we hit a member pass over and call out that as a passover or.
Can I make a suggestion? We have, we email each one of the members that need it with a link.
I, I believe the town clerk has done that already, but I should check on that, yes.
I think my suggestion is that we pass over this to the next meeting and send them all a link.
To see if we can get that done.
Yeah, please complete this by the next meeting.
Our next meeting is 2nd, right, July.
So, right, so that would mean that they would miss one day.
Well, yeah.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, because we, we've been, we've been down this road before. Everyone who serves legally will continue to serve in that position until they're replaced.
Okay.
The difference is during their appointment time, you know, we would have to remove them.
Okay.
But the fact that once their appointment date, once their official appointment period passes, they, they're still in that position until we replace.
So we reappoint or dismiss.
What if we appoint those who have completed their, their.
I just think it's cleaner.
Well, we've hopefully posted that we will either.
Yeah.
Do one of the two things that I had mentioned before, because we've listed these members for reappointments. So we need to pass them over, ask them.
Make sure.
Or amend the motion.
Cause the other, the other issue is to, my, my suggestion is to send it, send it and then on the second, what I'm doing is we just post. We post all the ones that haven't. So that it's open for anybody else who wants it.
I'm okay with that. It's one day. It's definitely, we can send them an email and get that.
Yeah, I agree. Just have somebody email them the link.
Okay, so then we'll pass over this agenda item.
Okay.
Before we continue, yeah.
Karen, new appointment?
Yeah.
We said three-year appointment. That started when? That's July 1st.
That's July 1st.
The 25th. So is the expiration June 30th, 20, of 2027 or 2020?
That one was, I, I believe.
Is she filling in?
As of today, she's appointed because of the way she, like, talks.
Okay, so she's filling out.
So then it's two years and, and one.
It's a three-year appointment that's in progress already.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, alright. Cause we didn't fill those others.
So just one other point. So it won't be an issue to, about, since the town accountant and town council are on here, it won't be a problem to have.
Well, as I am not a town council.
Well, she's, she, she already, she, she's, she's not exempt from that, but she has other ethics. She take, well, let's put it like this.
I mean, right, I mean to have a gap where there's no town accountant. They, like, I mean, like.
We could always.
But again, all of them, all of them, that, that existing right now, they will continue. They don't, in other words, they don't turn into a pumpkin.
Yeah, so I'll reference, we had the discussion about the building inspector last time and it was the same concept that was explained to us, which no matter whom they are, if they were appointed, they stay in that position until.
Right.
X, Y, until we disappoint them or.
Yeah, the big, the big differences.
That's a word I just made.
Once they're in there for their term, you can't remove them from their term. But once the term is expired, you can appoint somebody else.
Right.
And they just automatically, they just immediately take your place.
And I would say this, if, if our understanding is incorrect, I think we're okay. We could always have a quick meeting to extend critical role we need to.
Alright. So, uh, number. I see. So when we, that was listed twice. So the community, we talked about the community events, Horables Parade in the community event section, but it is also listed on our agenda as number eight. So we've already completed that as a portion of a different part of the agenda. That's our fault for listing it twice. I apologize.
Well, do, do we make a motion? We haven't made a motion to, to give them the permit to allow them to have, have an access.
Is that what the number?
It is, we have to, because it's a parade, we have to give a parade permit, which is.
I appreciate you guys correcting me on that. Alright, so, yes, Select Board members, everybody except for Mr. Cooter is correct. And we need to give them the special permit to walk down Maple Street. So I'd be looking for a motion for that.
I, I move to approve the Horables Parade permit for the Horables Parade, the annual Horables Parade, July 3rd at 6:30 PM to start at, at Emerson Street and travel down Maple Street to end at the Town Hall.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Almost had a smooth meeting. Alright, so number nine is the IT contract renewal. So this, the IT contract has not changed. This is the IT contract we approved two years ago for a three-year contract. Each year on July 1, we need to renew our approval of that contract. And so this is the final year of that three-year contract. So I'd just be looking for a motion to approve that renewal. It's on, like I said, it's unchanged. This is our operational item.
There's an increase to the third year. That's why we took a year.
Yes, so the third year, thanks for bringing that up. The third year is essentially like a doubling. Right? And if you remember back to the original discussion, that was because we were level-setting services that we were underpaying for. And this is, you know, for the communities. They understand where that cost difference is coming from. So yes, they needed sort of catch up on fees and services that they had been providing. And we had agreed to that as a.
It wasn't, it's not as expected.
Right.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So I, I make a motion to approve the renewal for year three of the three-year contract. So this is the last year of fiscal 2026.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? That motion passes. Alright, so here's a big one. Um, we've all been really, you know, acutely aware of all the need to, to kind of get the dent property work finished up. As part of that, we need to wire the, the actual, you know, money to the recipient. And so because of that, because of the authorization at town meeting, we need to put a motion, which is here in front of you, that directs the treasurer to wire that sum to, to the property holders. So I'd be looking for a motion.
I would make this motion just pending that all appropriate paperwork has been signed and submitted.
Okay, I would accept that.
And this motion is for being through town council too, the, the way.
That's why I didn't read it, because I didn't wanna screw it up.
As, as written pending all completed credit work.
Correct. I would, I would say that motion. Right, so, um, let me just read it out loud in case I have to. So the motion was that we would move the Select Board votes to authorize the wire transfer of funds necessary to close the real estate transaction for the purchase of the dent conservation restriction in the amount of $790,630. As authorized by the Mendon Annual Town Meeting of May 3rd, 2024, under Article 29. Uh, and so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Alright, so the motion passes.
I wanted to just, again, thank Anne Mazur for all of the work that she did on this project.
Yes.
Hireless, like, I think there were a lot of.
There were a lot of.
A lot of iterations and, yeah, a lot, a lot of moving parts, right? A lot of organizations, all of which had their own administrative curves, it sounds like.
And further, I'm pretty sure that this amount is several hundred thousand dollars less than what was appropriated and approved at town meeting. Again, because of her efforts and lobbying different state agencies that, that contributed to the paying for the conservation restrictions. So it's a.
The nature conservancy, Mass Audubon, and maybe, was it also medic?
Medic comment, yeah. Yeah, it's like a Herculean task, these, these conservation restrictions. It's, it's really wonderful. I was actually saying, when we were signing earlier, I was saying how silly it is that the people who do all the work don't ever get to sign the documents. Anyway, yes, thank you, Anne, always. Uh, so number 11 is the Town Planner IMA with Millville for six hours a week. So, um, there are some, there, you know, there's revisions to the, that section that were included here. And if you remember, we've, we've taken the Town Planner on, as more of a full employee. And then we share the Town Planner with Millville for this time per week. So this is just about approving the Town Administrator approved provisions.
So just to remind ourselves, this is, so in, in the past, we have shared this employee with another town. And then now this is gonna be our employee and then Millville will be.
Yes, previously, we were the ones with the IMA.
Right.
They're sort of paying us for our time, as opposed to before we were paying somebody else for their time.
I think it's minus Ossbridge.
Ossbridge was the primary, were they the?
They were the primary, yeah. Yeah. So it's great. We're really happy to have Dylan on board.
We are.
They are a huge boon to our planning environment. So I'd be looking for a motion there.
I move to approve the IMA Subject to Town Administrator Approved Provisions Section 3.1.
Second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? And motion passes. So the Town Administrator is off for this evening. So there is no Town Administrator report. So we're gonna pass over that section. And then we can jump into some future agenda items. So the first thing is the committee creations, assessments and revitalization. I guess I wanna hear here, I mean, I, I guess I did hear here, but I kinda wanna hear here what you guys want on an upcoming agenda. I'm sometime in July or maybe early August to talk about this. Um, so some of this, some of this is the stuff Mike was just bringing up. But some of this is other stuff like the, the activities and the, you know, and the committees we might wanna bring up or, or put back down. So, so yeah, I guess if you have more directed thought ideas about what we can put on the agenda to sort of get this off our agenda and spin this out, do the actual task work, I'd love to hear. Well, no, you can just shoot me an email and we'll get it on an agenda.
Yeah, we talked about, you know, having, having, you know, the spreadsheet and whatnot.
Yeah, I think we keep trying to do too much in that one item. So let's break it down. It's some more doable work.
There is one thing that Evan talked about way back to the previous Town Administrator that we tried to do the little bit off the ground. Is to have quarterly meeting with representatives from all of these.
There was one.
There was one, right.
When I was chair of the Taxi Committee.
It's really great to get everybody on the same page in one place.
Alright, so we can, we can put a super meeting agenda item on the next agenda. That's.
That's. But, I mean, I want to be, you want to get thoughts around what this agenda item means to each of us.
Yeah. And then I want to split it out, and if it's, if it needs to be split out, but if everybody has the same thing, let's talk about that same thing. But I don't think everybody has the exact same idea about what they want to say here. So then we often go off on many little tangents, we don't, we don't, not same focus.
Yeah, I mean, to some extent, we talked earlier about the liaisons, so like.
Yeah, I think that's a separate component of this, yeah, it's like a subcategory. So, so that liaisons is definitely a single item in and of itself. And we have a spreadsheet, and we just basically need to circulate that spreadsheet with what the original assignments were. And then, you know, what people's new choices are to step back, and then we can talk about that public, see what everybody's thoughts are.
And to your point, though, if we all flood you and Jeremy with our thoughts of what comprises that one bullet, you can clearly see standalone items that could be an agenda item over here and start to carve it out to a more.
Yeah, I'm trying to focus on, you know, we all have like amorphous stuff that we enjoy talking about, and it's fun, but it's distracting. So we need to get a little bit more specific on some of these items. So like, for example, the highway road maintenance plan. That means, I've heard you talk about what you think that means. That's another item there, like, do we want John to come and give exact, specific recommendations that what we're saying, and we need to ask him to come do that, right? So that's another one of those items.
I think, didn't we have a study done?
We did.
So we have recommendations, just he should give, come give us a report.
Yeah, so it's like, we should probably, actually, so I'll go back and look and see what that. We need to go back and look at his last presentation and essentially say, we need you to revise this with a new set of street recommendations. Because remember, he had prioritized those and whatnot. I don't think I've looked at that since then.
And then there's also been.
Printout of it.
Okay, there's also been an issue, particularly the stretch of Hartford Avenue East from Plain Street. And as you can see, as now I travel that every day, it's really getting beat up.
Yeah.
So. Just want to jump back to the point, for each one of these bullets, you could be asking us to sign it, weigh in on what you think these topics are.
Yeah, because I'm going to start chipping these off, putting them in. And I kind of have more language in that, and I'd like to have your thoughts.
And this could actually be information not only to the agenda, but useful.
Yes, yeah, because if it doesn't fit, if it's, if it doesn't lead to a motion, we're going to have to put it into the goal setting, yeah.
That's an ask of the chairs before.
That ask of the chair, the board, is like, help me put more directed thoughts into these agendas so that we can have more directed conversation, and we can split it out over time. You see, like, where we blew through this meeting? I think when we have various, say, agenda items that we've all well thought out before we got here, it makes the time go a lot easier.
We've gotten more in this meeting.
We could have got more in this meeting. And I wasn't, when I went over this agenda, you know, on Monday, I wasn't exactly sure what to do with these items, because I didn't, I don't, I don't want it to all come out from my brain, or five people, and so if I direct it with this one line, it should be all of us.
Yeah. When would you want that? Do you want that before, like, within a week's time? Do you just get some feedback so that you got something you chew for July 2nd?
So, yes, because thinking about July 2nd is pretty thin right now. If you could at least start on the first two there. And then what I'm about to tell you here is that, coming up on that next meeting, is Chief Bangla is going to come and give his presentation. If you have there, you know, if you have specific KPIs that you'd like him to discuss in that presentation, you should send them to him, like, right now. But otherwise, he's going to come with a preset.
I think that would flesh that out, sort of, I think, kind of an idea of what to expect, but also we weighed in in this meeting to say also, think about your broader needs, like, what you're, we're going to be in five, 10 years type of.
Right, from the capital perspective.
Capital and the resources.
Our, yeah. And so, so the number, or letter D, inventory of land. So I would like to make time to talk about burial ground space, something that's important to Mr. Rolle, and I've been looking this up. It seems to be very important to most towns, and most towns are having this issue, and most aren't addressing it. And so burial ground space is important to a section of our population. I don't know how large of our population is expecting to have burial space, but we don't have any, so that's something we need to talk about.
Well, the truth is, we actually do have available space.
That we need to allocate.
And we've got, when you talk about the, you know, the strategy, the Civil War monument, that's why I think about the, you know, by merging those two, it's a potential to have some of the cost, a significant amount of the cost.
Yeah, on the Civil War monument, I've asked the Town Administrator to reach out to the state to have them give in writing what it is they will.
Yeah, a lot do. We also need to do is to reach out to the American Legion, which is the group in town that runs the memorial parade every year. Because I think there's, and I think we even have a, don't we have an elected position?
We have a cemetery.
But there's, there's monuments and there's.
Yeah, I don't know if that's covered by.
There is, the Prince Swandale is a private nonprofit, so there's a private.
That maintains them.
Well, they're, they're a committee.
Right, the cemetery.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, so, yeah, so on the Civil War monument, yes, when we have that on the agenda, I'm definitely going to invite members of that community to come and chat. The burial ground space, I would like to get on to the land, the land use committees' agenda, talk about it before it comes here.
Sure, but I just think it should be, it would be a good idea to, to talk about both of those at the same time.
Okay. We can definitely arrange that. And then B structures and bylaws is kind of an easy one. So I'm going to get this coming up soon, we don't really need to chat much about that. And then goal setting, so we need to pick a, a time. So it, we had chatted last time, I think, about Mondays, right? Was that?
Oh, we had the.
Did we pick an exact date?
Jeremy said, send, you were to send Jeremy your availability in the month of July.
That's my failure for not to.
No, I just sent the. It is, well, no. Only that I forgot.
All right, so if you remembered, yay, and if you did it, please send your availability in July.
I mean, by availability, do we mean for like a Monday night in July?
For a Monday night, and if you can't do Monday nights, you know, I guess.
I spent my bit the whole.
The whole time, yeah, okay, that's fair.
Or for meetings, or?
I went through Saturday.
Oh, Saturdays?
So I would go through Saturday morning, yeah.
How many hours are we talking about?
Last time we did three, I believe.
Probably less than that, sort of an extension.
Yeah.
Continuation of our conversation.
How much time would you guys like to spend? I mean, I would say at least two. Is three too much?
At least focused.
Three's tough, yeah, all right, let's do two. Great, are there any other items? Anybody wants to throw in the notes there for Katie to put on the list? We're going to start checking these off, because I don't want to get too c. All right, so our next meeting, our next two meetings are July 2nd and July 16th. Is, July 2nd is vacation season, so.
I will be in California, so I'm planning to join.
Okay, excellent.
I'll be in Dallas.
All right, Dallas, California, Mike? Menden.
Yeah.
I'll be in Menden, too. All right, so that's it. I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes, all right, everybody, have an excellent night. I will close this meeting at 7:09 and 24 seconds. Thank you. Did Miles die?
I think it died.